You ready, Jeff?
Good evening. I'd like to call in order the Thursday, June 25th, 2020 Bowling Green Town Council meeting. Please join me in the pleasure of the week. We do have a form. It has everybody's address. It's nice to see everybody in person. Go ahead. First item on the agenda this evening is the public hearing for the FY 2020 budget amendment and supplemental appropriation. This is in regards to budget amendments greater than 1% of the appropriated budget require public hearing. The proposed FY 2020 budget amendment and supplemental appropriation is in the amount of $55,000, general fund $10,000, water fund $15,000, sewer fund $30,000. The proposed budget amendment and supplemental appropriation needed to cover the cost of unexpected expenses. This has been properly advertised and there's documentation regarding each one within your package. If anyone would like to speak on this matter, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and a reminder that we hit limited to 30-minute comments. Second call? Third and final call. Public hearing regarding FY 2020 budget amendment and supplemental appropriation. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Tanyan. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Is there a second or more? Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to detail on the $10,000. Also, I have a question. $30,000 appropriation.
Microphone for the people in the other room.
Yeah, we gotta use our microphones tonight.
Correct.
Uh, question of the $10,000 appropriation budget request and $30,000 on the sewer.
Go ahead.
I can respond with the $10,000. The $10,000 is due to the fact that when we approved FY 20 budget initially, we did not know how much the audits were going to be. Because in the past, it's been about $8,000. This year, we have a new auditor, and then two years of audits, so it cannot be $30,000.
So we can ask them, how much is it going to be?
We had already passed the budget when we signed the audit here on.
Okay. How about sewer related for 2020 to $30,000?
Yes, on the sewer, it's uh, this is the reason why we're putting in the preliminary engineering report for your plant down there. It's a repair and maintenance budget. And first of the year here, we had problems with the racing pump, the light, the control electric panel, the flare fire. All of those, when they break down, you gotta fix them. It's a plan that doesn't work.
Do you have a wish for this, for repairs?
I'm sure you followed the normal procedure, but we had already exceeded the budget. I mean, the, the, well, I'm short of it. It's we didn't bring in the budget payment from the board here. But you still have points down the plant that are very bad to repair. That's why we're trying to do a study to get them fixed and come up with grants. And when stuff breaks, you gotta fix it. And we just have an estimate in the budget on what it will take. And last year, we had the same deal. It was, and that's why the assist rates are a reduction. The system's old and long in time, say, on the water system. You know, when that breaks, after you repair and maintenance plant is gone, you can't just see the people there not to have water to need to fix it.
So are you certain that the free beds got to leave on the repairs?
I don't know. There's, there's supposed to be quotes on certain things in the declarations for certain contractors. Not necessarily provide you with the documentation on how people make their repairs.
Yeah, I'd like to see their poses of the issue.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor will do a roll call vote. More? Yeah. Fowler? Kim?
Yes.
You? Who? No. Six yeses and one no. Okay, motion passes. I'd like to open the public hearing for the tax and utility rate for FY 2020 to 2021. The proposed tax includes an increase of roughly 3% in the waste collection fee, a 10% increase in water rates, and an increase in the Rock 301 tax district from the current, $74 cent on $100 to $92 cent on $100. And this has been properly advertised. Again, if you would like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to 30 minutes. Hi, I'm Jeff. How's Jeff?
We have no one.
Okay. All right, um, we do have email requests for public comment due to citizens not being able to. Ken refers to Bonnie Cannon. She wants to note it on the record that she is opposed to the water and trash rate increase. And then we have a letter from Edith Taylor on Lacy Wayne, Mary Forre on Hill Street, Nancy Johnson on Hill Street, Barbara Allen on Travis Street, and Carrie Mojo on Walker. They collectively wrote this email that I'm gonna read. "We, the citizens of the town of Bowling Green, have the following concerns about the town police chief's proposed contract and do not agree with the proposal. A, proposal that the town cover 100% of his insurance to include family members. Will all employees be provided this option? B, immediate pay increase of 7% be followed by another 6% over the remaining years of the contract?" I'm sorry.
Can you catch the word?
Look, we'll save this obstacle back over in the public comment. I'm sorry. I misunderstood exactly what that was saying. Sorry. So that's it. If there anyone else that would like to speak on the tax and utility rate? Third and final call? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve the revenue tax and utility rates?
I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Tanyan. Is there a second?
I'll say it again.
Do we have a second by Deborah?
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to. So I have something to say. Uh, talking about 301 tax district. I know last year, we got approved and all that. But raising it back up this year, I understand that, and that's not my concern. But my concern, guys, is us taxpayers then are paying all this money. The landlord is paying all this money. All we have is four and sewer lines sitting there. We need to see the government forward to try to bring some business, advertise it. Some of them, if their property owners down there do not have to eat the burden of tax. Or less than it by the amount that whatever comes in down there, the value goes up, it lessens for all the people that are having it down on their property. What it spurs it out. You know, that 301 has been there for a while. Water and sewer has been there for a while. And the town, the EPA, the EPA director that we have, start pushing it.
And I agree, but it also, as it's been stated many times, the government can't make all decisions on property owners' property. So I encourage the property owners also, so it should be included, the EDA, the town, and each individual property owner out there that's gonna benefit from the water and sewer greatly if they market their property also. So it's more than just a government function to market individual pieces of property that's not owned by the government.
I just want to run a council, and as our citizens, about the water rate stack. The only reason me as a council member, I think most of us are going this route to increase it, is because we need such desperate repairs on our water system. And with all the repairs they were currently doing, I just hope that they remain patient and in the long run, it will not be anything like what we've seen in the taxes and raising those costs. And I look at it, we're dropping it on $100, you know, every couple of months. And I hope that people can understand that, that there is nothing more important to us in this town or in this country than our water. So this is one of those things I don't think we have a lot of ways on. We have to go through this stuff. Just hope that people understand that.
And to add to that, we are still cheaper than anywhere around this. We're still cheaper than county. We are roughly $23 with the new rate compared to county rate, cheaper by the month than much county. The counties are also offering $0.40,000, and we're offering $0.50,000. So, and then even after we do our increase that we need to get to, to be able to sustain this grant funding and grant and loan, we're still cheaper. We're getting a whole lot better water, newer lines, and cheaper than anybody else.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions if you don't mind, please. On the water rate increase in there. Mr. Town manager, we grew up in this pretty good amount, not significantly. How many years are we gonna be up to the water rate? What's your projection on what we have to do?
We can all like to do it. It depends on the increments we wanna do. I do have a handout that Melissa has. You can probably do it over three to five years.
What percent rate is 65%?
I don't know off the top of my head, but you're definitely looking at probably from your current base, 45%, 65%, but when that's through, I have a sheet there that shows that our combined water and sewer, even after we complete, that our combined wells are gonna be less than the county. And the example is this year, they're 27% more expensive than we are for water and sewer, for 5,000 gallons of usage a month. With our 10% on the water side, that gap closes to 25%. So every 10%, we do, still, it's just only 2% further towards the county. So we're gonna be significantly still, I believe, lower than the county when we get through. Next year, we had started with southeast real cap on rate increase. I got a deal, a person working on it, and had annuals and things out. So we did get the rate in place, because he's recommending that we do a different tier than what we currently do.
So we're up here to say this, we're happy.
The average, the average, the EDU, which is a combination of commercial water, is like $30 per unit is what the monthly rate has to be to support the water system.
And where are we at with that yet?
Probably, I think it's 22, 23, around 29, 24, probably after 10%.
So you're looking at a 40% increase?
We're at $6 a month increase, 40%. Well, percentages, when you're very low in your rates, percentages tend to be large. But excluding the chief of water and gas and road and fuel stations, not only your size, but the state. And in the end, it costs what it costs. We had, as I pointed out at the last meeting, that rate includes, the water sewer rate includes the dedication of your entire real property to mention personal property tax for 40 years. In passing, again, the bond payment on the water sewer, if, that you took out for 40 years, both water and sewer, you have to owe them a fine for that. Your real estate property tax, entire real estate property tax. And about 90% of your personal property tax are what you dedicated in paying that for 40 years. Unless the rate pairs absorb that. And that was all from the goal that USDA was saying, is you interenable these things, that you subsidize even so much that you break smartly, like in your cost of operation, let alone, I mean, we just, we're just approaching paying for operations. Since I've been here, we weren't even covering operations, where our rate increases that subsidy pay our operating costs. And with the new structure of the budget showing the amount of subsidy that the general funds did, people will have total transparency on where the money's coming from and what it costs, cost to operate. And, you know, we're into the situation where our repair and maintenance bills escalate in every year. And one of the things that they brought up on the water maintenance is sort of, the more you fix the lines, the more you create more pressure on your main fragile lines. So it's growing, I won't say exponentially, but you're, you're, you've reached the point where I'm not even collecting enough money to fix the systems. I'm just gonna have to fix it.
So did I hear you say that 40% of our personal and personal property tax, the real estate tax, goes to pay the 40-year loan? Is that what I heard you say?
We're paying out of the general fund. I have to look at the budget in the end later. We're paying about $185,000. Our real estate tax brings in about $140, $145. Personal property tax brings in about $50,000.
So you're paying over 40% of that. So, and I understand what you're saying. I think, based on that, I guess my question is, is that, where can we kind of relate your tax taxes, can we follow that link in the national personal property tax and the state tax, also the increase in the water sewer that's going forward?
Uh, you've already dedicated that to subsidize the water sewers. You're currently using that to pay. You're taking that money from the general fund and transferring it to those systems to pay the bond debt on the.
Pay the loan.
The loan that you took.
Yes. I understand, pay the loan.
And that's instead of having the rate pair to put it up. So.
So we have more than 40% of our real estate and personal property tax take care of the $40,000 or $70,000 or $40,000?
Well, of the two combined, probably closer to 90%. I can do the math for you later. It's not much of a budget. It's not popular on my post. But it's, it's, in essence, you dedicate the code for the 40 years. Unless you have the rate pairs, unless, and I'm gonna recommend that later when we go to the fiscal policy, we're gonna have to get to the upgrades that sometime in the future that we develop a plan, that you have a multi-year plan, like was recommended, like it was about 20 years ago, where you do 3-4% a year to start paying that, and then reduce the general fund on the other side.
Okay, I do have a question on the Rock 301 taxes, which you've increased the property owners' tax by 40%.
I didn't increase the tax at all. The tax has said, what happened, as I explained during the budget hearing, was we estimated the year that we did the construction on the project. We estimated when we're gonna close the loan, which determined how much interest and interest payments should we make that year. We didn't close on my projected date. So in the end of that last fiscal year, we overcollected $6,000. So since that was in the fund dollars, I gave them a credit by reducing last year's tax rate by the $6,000. So they have a one-year, one-year reprieve to what the rate will be going forward until the assessment.
So is the rate now actually the original rate going up there?
No, the original, the original rate was much higher because you had a different loan through the resource authority, I believe, and a much shorter payback period. One of the things the council did, we developed a financial plan before I was here, with the consultants from the community municipal lead finance branch. The work with USDA financed this project, and we financed that debt. You stretched the debt out from a shorter term and a higher interest rate to a longer term at a lower interest rate, and it was well over a dollar at one time. So it was a significant reduction on the annual rate of collection that spread out over a much longer period of time. So there actually, that actual pocket cost has gone down the last couple of years. And last year, they got an extra bump because we overcollected here before. Because at one time, we had been about $7,000, you know, in the tax. And now we're down to, we're gonna fall down with this new structure.
So you've had a 4% reduction in this structure? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, because we did, now the loan, loan, right, loan rate.
How to reduce it, you're still gonna owe the same, just over a longer period.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We have a roll call vote to approve 120, 20020, there's 002. More?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
others? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Six yeses and one no. Next item on the agenda is delegations. Um, Mr. Sam Frye, representative of the Community Heart and Soul organization. Is asked to speak to council. I'd like to invite Mr. Frye to the podium.
Members of council, mayor, my name is Sam Frye. I live in One Left East Bronx Avenue. I am the coordinator for the Community Heart and Soul organization. This organization is made up of probably about one coach who are extremely dedicated and committed to the revitalization of Bowling Green. To achieve that, we've been involved in a number of activities. The reason I am here tonight is because of one of those activities. Part of the program, now there are different phases. Part of the program is to organize ourselves, set our goals, and to engage in what is called a reveal. Now, reveal is when the community of heart and soul actually attaches itself to an event and reaches out to the community, lets them know what we're trying to do, and so on and so forth. Reveal, we've established the reveal, or we had scheduled the reveal a number of times. Of course, pandemic, we lost some events. So we're shooting for our reveal to be held during Mayberry Days. We're gonna team with local businesses, we're gonna team with realtors, and we can get the word out what Community Heart and Soul is about and what it is we're trying to accomplish. Having said that, my understanding is that there are some EDA funds available. We had a meeting in the beginning of June where we discussed what it is that we would need to facilitate this reveal. We decided that we wanted to get postcards where we would have pictures of different events in Bowling Green. We would have a mission statement. We would have our goals and what we would intend to go through in order to achieve those goals, rack cards, and banner. Cost came out to just under $500. We are hoping that with this reveal, we could enough folks in Bowling Green to stop by and find out what we're all about. We will move to the second phase of the Community Heart and Soul program, which is a dad gathering. And we would be talking to folks in Bowling Green and in surrounding communities, putting together a story of Bowling Green. What do you remember about Bowling Green? What would you like to see Bowling Green become? And through that, perhaps we could get some old folks interested in helping us out. So, and before we vote, respectfully request $500 grant, cover the cost of the rack cards, postcards, and the banner that we can display during our reveal. Does anyone have any questions about Community Heart and Soul? Right now, we have about 10 people. They, during the pandemic, we have not lost anybody. We've been doing Zoom meetings, and participation is still high, enthusiasm, energy is still high. We have a lot of young folks in Bowling Green who are committed to this revitalization of the town and to attract people to come into town, whether they're people moving into Bowling Green, or the people in the town itself, or the surrounding area. Get them to come into Bowling Green and with some enthusiasm and, you can hear me, can't you?
We're just trying to get people out, dog. You hear the engine as well?
All right.
Thank you.
So, Sam, I just have a quick question. So last year, when you started this, there was almost 75 people in this room.
Yes, ma'am.
Why do you think you lost so many people on direct line?
I have no idea. I think some people, a lot of folks were interested. The numbers remained pretty high up until the time of the pandemic came. And we, I don't know, I must receive a dozen emails from folks who indicated they were still interested, but they weren't gonna be attending meetings. And I think that, you know, pandemic has sacked the attitude of our folks. But we still had that core of about 20 people. And to be frank with you, that 20 people should be buried through.
So I think that sounds right to carry through, but I thought the purpose of this Community Heart and Soul, what's to get the community all in inclusive. So during the time prior to the pandemic, is there, the reason there was never any info or tabs or anything along town saying, "Community Heart and Soul, Community Heart and Soul, come join us", because that was prior to the reveal? Perhaps there's nothing on the website, the town website, that says, "Community Heart and Soul"? I'm just trying to find out why there wasn't more information out there to keep those people, there was extra more than 20. Because it's like all 20 that take all those decisions, and then the rest of the community is on the side of the road. So there's no way to say that.
No, I would disagree with that strongly, actually.
But that's what I'm conscious.
The 20 people are actually part of the, they're the central committee. And those 20 people, yeah, they make almost all the decisions. But that was the way the program was set up. If you wouldn't always have 75 people.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, which is a logistical nightmare for trying to conduct business. The 20 people form a core of the organization. I can check in on why there isn't anything on the website, to be honest with you. But, yeah, the pandemic has paused us to dial back on some of our discussions, some of our activities and so on. again, the pandemic has paused us to dial back on some of our discussions, some of our activities and so on. Um, now this reveal, uh, like I said, this thing was supposed to happen some time ago. We were going to do it at the Lion Festival. We, uh, picked around the idea of, uh, doing a music on the green. And as long as Mayberry Days is still on the books, we will have this reveal. We'll have a table, we'll have the postcards, we'll talk to folks, let them know what we're all about, what we're trying to do. And with the pandemic, I hate coming back to that thing, but gosh darn, it has really put a damper on a lot of activities in the town, the hardest festival. Um, but I really feel that, um, if we just have one shot where we can reach out to folks, that we can keep the enthusiasm going beyond the 20 people. And I don't think that all 75 people that were here for the initial meeting have actually left us. Um, and maybe that's because we need to post something on the, on the website. I'll check that out.
Same, I can, I can help you out here with that, too. It's been involved with, uh, the reason that we're down to only 20 people is because the information sheet was given out and these 75 people, or it could be 100 people, whoever, they put down their interest, what they were wanting to do within the group. Whether they were wanting to be leaders, they wanted to be followers, they wanted to be part-time helpers down the road, uh, they wanted to be data collectors later on. Uh, so that's how we came up with the core group that we have now. They are the core leaders, but everybody was offered the opportunity to be on our app, whoever wanted to be. So who's there now is the ones who all wanted to take on the responsibility or had the time. And it doesn't mean that other people can't come in and other people can't be.
Sure.
It's not locked in, but that's just who's left. Now, once we start getting that out there, we start doing the data collecting, then we will be involved with more people to be involved to do that. The overall outcome will be community involvement, okay? Right now it's just getting a select few that want to take charge and can see this through.
And then phase two is, is the data collection. What that entails, however, is for, for example, you and I to sit down together and we talk about your, uh, thoughts on Bowling Green, maybe your experiences in Bowling Green. Um, what do you want to see Bowling Green become? Well, with pandemic, it's very difficult to sit down and do something like that. But with the reveal, we can at least get a list of people that we can contact later and say, "Okay, the face mask thing is off, we're allowed to come brigade, we can meet here, we can meet there", and sit down and talk about, "What are your hopes and dreams about Bowling Green? What are your experiences here? Have you lived here all your life? Tell me about Bowling Green 50 years ago."
Sam, in my name.
Uh, in that original meeting, most of the people wanted to be involved. Um, but like you said, we have the core team, but, uh, you know, a lot of people just want to volunteer for one thing or they just want to help out, so we're still on board with a lot of people. It's just that we haven't gotten up to that point to call them back and have a great meeting with everybody, because we aren't able to. So there's also an example of the car that has been drawn up that we requested money for, and that's under your section, section six, um, the very la-, next to the very last page in your packet. Thanks, Sam.
And we should have been in phase two probably, gosh, two months ago, maybe three months ago. We should have been well into the data gathering aspect of this and starting to put together the story of Bowling Green some time ago. And we will, um, move the environment strike force to do something like that. In the meantime, uh, yeah, we're picking around ideas of things we can do. We have, uh, we're in planning stages of maybe putting a mural on one of the buildings in town. Uh, a sidewalk sale, you know, providing, doing all this stuff under the strictures of what government says we can and cannot do in regards to pandemic. So, you know, we're picking around ideas. We're trying to get some stuff done. We're trying to keep people interested. Um, and we're, hopefully, the, the, this reveal will help us out, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a request for a $500 grant slash donation to the community heart and soul. Is there a decision or a motion, Mr.?
Ma'am, I, I would like a request that you consider that we got a next year's budget. And it's very close, and it's probably has to come down to $100. Still have to figure out the provision.
Okay.
I think if they're gonna spend it out next year's budget, they have to approve it next year.
Well, we'll put it in the budget later. We're gonna be considering whether to add steam this program.
But if they vote on it tonight, it's gonna come out of this year's.
Well, Sam, we're gonna vote on both the budget later tonight and appropriation. Is, if they want to do it, I'd much rather add it to the budget than add it to the appropriation.
For, for the month?
For next year. Later on the agenda, we have to adopt the budget.
For next year?
For next year. And one of the things that we gotta discuss is whether we're gonna add to that budget, like a stimulus program, which is a $20,000 program.
So you're gonna have revenue?
Yeah, with, my recommendation is if you decide to do it for that program, that we have to come out and sign a balance.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's, uh, which is all other records here.
Yeah, my concern is about approving a budget that is larger than what's happening.
So what if we just, if we did take the funds out of the EDA, use it appropriately?
Not, my question, are you asking for it to come out of the EDA?
I'm, I'm just throwing that idea out there.
I don't, I don't want to bog us down on this kind of, this request.
I think you said you want the, uh, you need to go to budget, but if we do that, then that's not good to EDA, it's a, it's a. But you have to, uh, can I, yeah?
Uh, of the $500, you do have contingency of next year's budget. So, I mean, I can cover the $500. It's gonna be a session of, of, I guess, a stimulus program.
For, for words short, if I would take the $500 from anywhere, uh, the council will raise it for us.
I, I'm just saying that, you know, if, if, if you will to take for it, whether we make the motion this month or next month or later than next year's budget, I guess, next week.
So you think it was, uh, a consensus of the council's intent?
Yeah, I, I could pay it out instead of, uh, contingent services consensus.
Is there consensus?
Yes.
Yes. Not, me, you know, okay, but, but Dory said yes. All right, well, we'll take care of the $500, work with the town manager, and we'll make it happen.
And I thank you all. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your volunteer.
Yeah, you're very welcome. It's my pleasure. And stay safe.
You, too.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the public comments. Um, is there anybody here that would like to speak before I read the email?
I'm thankful.
No, they all did.
Hi, my name is Atlas Farm. I live at 124 Doisy Lane, and I've also worked in Bowling Green Range Duke for 48 years for Nationwide. So tonight I have a concern about the law enforcement. There is a lot of rumors going out, and, and personally, that is to my heart. I think Caroline County Sheriff's Department has done a wonderful job, and I think Chief Lipson and his group has done a wonderful job. And I heard that, you know, he's asked for some things that, you know, maybe y'all don't want to give him. But I feel like safety to me is the most important thing. I, now, I'm a single lady living by myself in Bowling Green, and I feel really safe. Like I said, I work here in Bowling Green. And Mr. Lipson has, had been the only one that, like I said, I've been here 48 years, that he checks on all the business people and make sure they're okay. Uh, like, one time, we parked in the back, he made sure we get in, you know, we're safe. You know, uh, if you see somebody hanging around in front of our office, he'll stop by to see if we're having trouble. Because with me working by myself, it's not safe for me to go out there and say something because, you know, they'll say something back and then, you know, they'll, they could do something, and I don't like that. But I just feel like if the committee could sit down and work with Mr. Lipson, because he's an asset. His team, his team are excellent. I, like I said, I feel comfortable when I go home at nighttime, I open it up and I'll look around and I'll sit on control, and that makes me feel good. I've had health issues, and so that's why I'm up here tonight, you know? I did, I don't know David. I've known by coming to the office and his staff. And like I said, I will say they are top-notch. Of all the years I've been in this town, um, I could, we can ask for anything else. I know he's got five children. He needs health insurance. Maybe you can't pay it all, but maybe we can pay a little more than half. Because like I said, if he, if we leave him with the way the world is now, I mean, we can sit back and ignore it, like, you know, what's going around in Furry Spur, Staff Foot, Ashland. It's kind of bowling green. Don't kid yourself. Right, we got trained people right now that can help. If he knows, his staff knows, or all, you know, I'm not saying they are, because I don't talk radio. I did this out of my own, um, self tonight because I just, I was just so passionate about the way we're getting treated. And, um, we're gonna find somebody right now to protect us the way they do. And he goes out of his way, all of them, because Justin, I don't even know the guy, and, um, Sean. Like I said, Bowling Green to the thankful. I just looked at what he did for his, doing tickets and stuff and, you know, drunk driving and all this. He brings revenue with him down. Uh, when he first come here, he was a little rough. I'll have to say that. He was giving tickets last night, but that's what y'all wanted. Then, uh, everybody said, "Slow down, slow, slow", bam. But he watches out for the old ladies that walk across the street. He'll make sure they do that and everything. So I'm just asking that if y'all reconsider and look at the budget for him, if you have to give him more to help him with his health insurance, that's a plus. When you've got a good person that you know is doing the job and he's an asset, you should do a little more for him and cut back on something else that we don't need and everything. So, um, that's all I'm asking for. Um, I'm not in trouble, they got another loss. But I just feel like this law enforcement, we are protected, safe, and I know a lot of people do. They wouldn't come, but they wouldn't speak to us. I don't want to speak to, to, to people. But I would ask y'all that y'all could just sit down and have a peaceful conversation and see if we can give them better than what they've got now. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? There was nobody else.
Uh, Kim says no one else.
Okay. I will reread the email.
Oh, sorry, take it. Someone else is speaking.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is David, and, uh, I'm here to, I'm representing, um, Snook and Trill in Half Studio on Main Street. Um, we're kind of concerned about, uh, the town police also. Um, I'm not too good at speaking. I get a little nervous. And I've noticed that, uh, we have a lot of young children and stuff out here now walking up and down the streets and riding by, so that's, and. We like to have the, the town police have done a good job as far as slowing down the speeders. I know that, uh, Chief Lipson, I believe he is, uh, certified, uh, I forget you call it DOT man. Um, I would say he'd have stopped a whole lot of the traffic trailers that come through here. A lot of them were, have good inspection. They have brakes, uh, fenders, some are fenders, they can hold whatever. He stopped it, which is good as a safety issue for everybody in town. Um, and, uh, I also, I, I overheard when you said that, uh, you had a few emails from people that, that were against his, uh, proposal. Um, a couple of the names I recognize, they're the ones that complained about traffic trails coming through town, coming through town and making lots of noise and this and that and the other. Um, they don't realize David was the one that stopped it. So, I don't know, it's just, uh, we just feel like within the last year, he has done a lot more, um, going around checking businesses, uh, just like Mr. Farmer said. He goes around to every business. He asks how they're doing, if they have any trouble. Um, and we need somebody like that during the day when everyone is working, my wife is working. Um, and when there's money involved in a business, and like I said, the way things are going now, you don't know what people will do. Um, and we need somebody close here. If you have to pick up the phone, Chief Lipson will be there. I can tell you that. Um, so anyway, all I'm saying is you, if you can see it, please have it now. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Asher Lipson. I have an Asher Lipson photography located at 101 North Main Street. I come to you this evening to speak on behalf of my business and also my husband's position as the town police chief. I will start by saying the value you place into someone determines the return you get out of them. My position as the police wife is such. When my husband took this position, I supported him because I thought the community and you guys were gonna support him. He was eager to enjoy the family-friendly oriented atmosphere of Bowling Green. But very soon I found out if it did not benefit a few chosen town residents that have self-asserted cool, this, they can press their views and opinions until their particular views are placed into action. We as a family have to give up a heck of a lot of our time for him to be committed to this town. Sometimes we feel like we were placed on the back burner for him to complete all the tests that are asked of him for a fractional of the cost he was, if he was employed at another agency. The contract he proposed was suppo- supposed to be a starting point. The counter offer, which by the way, has never been officially submitted to him, basically said, "We don't value you or the work that has been performed to build the Bowling Green Police Department." basically said, "We don't value you or the work that has been performed to build the Bowling Green Police Department" back into a reputable department. You all that are sitting here on the council need to wake up and understand this town is not your town. And you were voted in to represent, represent the will of the people. The will of the people all be but a select few with personal stand-ups. It is to renew the contract of the current police chief and come up with counter offer that not gives my husband a sense of recognition but also benefits this town. With the proposed contract, my husband is actually taking a pay cut and will not receive a raise for a total of six years. We have five children, one which was diagnosed last year with epilepsy. On top of the insurance we pay out of pocket for the doctor's visits, his medication that we have to get monthly, we pay out of pocket, which is $400 for that one medication. I think adding one gas for him to come to work to pay out of pocket because you guys want to take the police vehicle away is a little absurd and a great one for him. If you do not trust him, but take him the vehicle home, but trust him to protect your town, you've got to rethink things. Now to the business side and the need for him to continue to be here. A lot of you probably didn't even know that I was the face of Asher Lipson Photography because you haven't stopped him. Some stopped in at the very beginning because they wanted to know what bid was for. Almost as soon as I opened my doors, I found out about the Bowling Green Grammar of Mill. I found out very quickly how certain people in town did nothing to further businesses but would gladly speak good things to your face and speak ill to harm your back. In the last three months, I have seen firsthand this happen to my husband. I think the term is called hypocrisy. In quotes, "If you do not value your beliefs, especially in this day and time, there is no need for them to stay around." He knows his value. If you do not accept that, he will find another agency that does value his time and knowledge. I am certain you will not lose him, but all the other guys with him. You will then have to start from scratch again. There are some on this council that have supported my husband. I only ask that you don't follow the lead of others that speak behind his back. To those persons, I say thank you. Thank you for listening and God bless, because this town means it.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council, mayor, everyone else in attendance. I'm gonna do my best not to be as emotional as Ashley was, but. My name is Sean Jett, I'm a police officer with your town police department. David Lipson is the reason that I'm here. For some of you that don't know, I do this part-time. I started doing this as auxiliary. If you don't know what auxiliary is, it means you do the same exact thing, except you don't get paid for it. That is the third time I have done this in my career. I started out doing this, I did it midway through my career because I was forced to. And I chose to come here to work under Chief Lipson because of who he is. I wanted to write down what I wanted to say, but it constantly changed. Because my thoughts on this constantly change. Those of us that are here are here because of that man. Because of who he is and how he leads. And he is just that, he is a leader. That man will not do anything that we won't do in vice versa. If he asks us to do something, it's because he wants us to grow, not because he can't. In this day and age, and I can only imagine that all of you follow the news, everyone wants to defund the police. When in opposite, in reality, the opposite needs to be done. We need more because we need more training, we need more people. I would love myself to come here full-time, but I know that can't happen. At least not at the current, that's what I'm wrapping. For those that don't know, I'm also a contractor for the United States Marshals. That's what I do outside of here. When I came here, I was auxiliary. Didn't have to be here, I wanted to be here. I love this area, I love this town. This area was what I was used to when I grew up. There isn't a shift that goes by that somebody doesn't stop me and ask how we're doing, how the chief is. Because people in this area care. He's made wonderful contacts with people in the time that he's been here. And I caution you, should you choose not to continue this contract, finding someone that you're gonna get of that stature to come into this area is gonna have the same effect that he does. I know if he's not here, I won't be here. I have no reason to be here, I'm here because of him. At this point in time, I ask that you take all of that into consideration. Because it's only going to be for the better in Bowling Green and for our agency. When I started here, most of the people that I knew had no idea the Bowling Green still had a police department. They didn't do anything. I can tell you now that when I'm on shift, I pretty much outwork the entire shift that the sheriff's office has because I'm working, because I want to be here and I want to do the difference. I am gonna read to you something that was brought to my attention. A few months ago, from a gentleman that I worked with. Him and his wife were part of a car club and they were supposed to be coming through town. This is, this is how much we've been put on the map because of the chief and because of what we do here. The directions, there are a few before this. Continue route two to the town of Bowling Green. Continue straight through the town of Bowling Green. Pay attention to your speed, I like, one-five miles an hour. There's a reason for that. Because we're out here making sure that people slow down. Every time I talk, citizens, council members, the complaints that we get, we try to do our best with what we have. If something's posted on a page, I do what I can to be in the area and try to take care of it if the chief isn't available, if the sergeant isn't available, or if the officer isn't there. If you lose him, you will lose that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I just want to start from the beginning. This, this is comments not from council that have received via email from the following group of, uh, citizens. Edith Taylor, Lacey Lane, Mary Corr, Gill Street, Nene T Johnson, Gill Street, Barbara Allen, Travis Street, Carrie Moser, Brooke Grouse. Lead to citizens of the town of Bowling Green have the following concerns about the town police chief's proposed contract and do not agree with the proposal. A, proposal that the town cover 100% of his insurance to include family members. Will all employees be provided this option? B, immediate pay increase of 7% to be followed by another 6% over the remaining years of the contract. C, taking home a vehicle or essential on-call personnel given a vehicle. D, how can the town afford such a high-paid police chief with a current 2018 population of 1,178 and square miles of 1.6 miles? E, what determines why the town needs a full-time police chief instead? These funds could be used to offset essential services and save on, save on increases for town residents. F, in reviewing the budget, we do not see any documented justification for requested increase. Thank you for your service and we appreciate your time and attention to these concerns. Is there anyone else that would like to address council while we're ending that? Here are none, we will, we will move on to the staff reports. And we have the Bowling Green Police Chief, update report.
Good evening, councilor, mayor, any questions?
The only comment I will make in this is only is I volunteered to help work on the police policy and we will have to continue that discussion. I was, I did not have any time available for a few weeks, you know, on vacation for a week and then my real job. So we, I still have that set to find a day to sit down and teach you about the police policy.
Here are no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the public works and utilities report. Are there any questions or comments on the repair report?
I believe the misunderstanding is that these repairs have been made over the budget year and the fund is now in, in the last, yeah, in the last month. I mean, if, 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 why, you know, when some of those pieces go down, you know, they're still running and luckily they haven't exceeded, you know, the violations, the UV light, the burn, slow, the testing, the slow, the changes. Uh, and just, just to note that, that's, that's, uh, they really says like $115,000 machine. The current one we have, uh, no longer manufactured. It's even harder to get after parts because nobody wants to deal with it. The problem we're having with it is the same problem that got to the NOB and then it keeps triggering, blowing off. We're not using the automatic system. So, uh, you know, we've got a temporary fix and watching it closely and testing it, but, I mean, ultimately, uh, we've got to get the long-term solutions to that need we like. Again, we're trying to go to USD 52, 55, uh, yes. And what I believe is partly part of that is even though there is pieces of equipment on there, we've been able to keep it in our operating parameters on this charge.
So, just a question, the repairs have been, $30,000 is close.
Maglan.
Thanks for the clarification. So the repairs have been done, the budget and then the request, and then the request is close, automatically done, so.
Yes.
Do you don't know if they, they, uh, proposals were put together and you don't, you don't do those things?
No, I don't think each, each, the item, they, they have, they have, it's, it's, we spend, total, yes. We spend a lot of money down there. And we review, I think the council, the committee, or prize of our situation on how we're exceeding those budgets down there. When things break, break. A lot of times you can't go out and just say, "Oh, I think we have three contractors come in and put three bids in on this because it's a piece of equipment that you got to get fixed in a short period of time." As soon as, you know, every time we do a water break here, we don't let three contractors come out and investigate the site and give us the best guess. A lot of these repairs do is you don't know until you open up, uh, with what's wrong with the ditch up there. Get the guy out there that's working on an oxidation ditch or on the waste field. Get the electrician that's going in there to come out and look out there. Goes in, finds out what the problem is.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Moving on to the economic development and bids coordinated monthly report.
Mr. Mayor, thanks, uh, members of council, thanks for having me tonight. Um, I'll just go over, touch on a few highlights from my staff report for this month. Um, you'll notice that, uh, we had a very successful, I, I thought, very successful collaborative meeting with the EDA and, uh, planning commission and landowners, landowners along the Raphael and Coyle where we discussed the future use map, um, that is included, that's, will be included in the, in the updated conference of plan. So that was a really good meeting. Uh, I'm sure, um, council member Coyle can speak today, um, during committee reports. Um, also, you'll notice that I connected with, uh, the economic development director for Ferguson and, um, I did that last week and I've essentially asked for mentorship, uh, on an economic development front. And, um, so it was a really great connection that I made. Um, she was recommended to me and, uh, we are actively corresponding just about daily. And, uh, she is a great resource in terms of plugging in to, um, necessary resources for economic development. And, um, so I feel very good about that, uh, new relationship, professional relationship. Um, finally, from an economic development standpoint, as the town manager mentioned, we do need to make a decision or council will need to make a decision on the voucher stimulus program that's been discussed. Um, I had a very productive meeting with Valerie and Glenn, um, a couple of weeks ago to iron out the details on that. Um, but that is something that I would ask for council to do some action on. Um, we are ready to roll it out, uh, when, with your approval. Of course, if, if it's not approved, we, they could shelve indefinitely. Um, August festival, you'll notice in your, in my packet is the pledge release that was prepared, um, informing the public of the recent decision made by council to cancel the event. Um, currently, I'm in the process of notifying vendors and also communicating with our very loyal and corporate sponsors to express our gratitude for yours and sponsorship in the past and, um, to hopefully have a, have that same monetary sponsorship amount earmarked for next year. Um, for community relations, um, been, been involved with the Bowling Green Virgin Community Alliance. Um, today, we completed our, uh, commercial district affiliate grant process and so that was closed out as of today in the German development system. Um, so those, um, the, the action items that were drawn up in the NOU for, for that have been satisfied to include the board becoming an established father-1C3 and as well as, uh, the development of a very lovely website. And I encourage you all to check that out. It is bgvacommunity.com. I'm also working with, uh, the owner of Old Manion and the Caroline County Public Schools on the possibility of a holiday drive-by event. Um, and I won't get into the details of that, but that's an ongoing discussion, uh, that, and we've got some ideas. And if you have questions about that or if you want to talk to me about it, I'd be happy to meet with any of you one-on-one, just so not taking up too much time tonight. It's still kind of just a, right now, just conceptual, but, um, but I am actively working on that. Does anyone, I, you'll, I just, lastly, the heads-up item. Um, please give me a call or shoot me a text or an email and pop on my office. Um, Valerie has come by, Glenn has been there, Jean, and it's, it's just really lovely. And Deborah, and, uh, I would just love for you all to come by, encourage the public to come by and set up a time of need and we can, uh, talk Bowling Green. Is anyone got any questions?
I have a question, and I also. The correspondence that you've got on your list here that you sent out for the development packages for the commercial corridors to pasta, is that privy to us or can we get a copy of that?
Um, it's sent out, it's, it's sent out to prospects that are leads that we have from, you know, folks at the state or random developers that are chosen. You, of course, you can take a look at the development package, um, that's public record, of course. Um, I don't, I'm not really, we're prospecting, so it's not. Um, I don't, I'm not really, we're prospecting, so it's not like we're having any active conversations with developers right now.
Yeah, I have to.
But yes, of course, you can absolutely have access to our development package.
You have a list of who you sent it to?
I'm sorry?
You do have a list of who you sent that to?
I could probably go back into records and, and make that, yeah, make that up and get that for you.
I didn't have mine, I just, I was just worried if there was a list and, uh.
This is just, you know, something that we're, you know, I'm tapped into every resource that I can, whether it be furniture, association of realtors, or, um, contractors through the state of Virginia and through the Department of Community Housing Development, um, folks that are actively working in, cooperating with opportunities ads that have connections, have made, um, connections through Virginia Main Street. And, you know, at this point, we, we send this out to, to anyone and everyone that may be able to generate some interest in, in the development of the property.
So the property, you're basically speaking of the property on three oh one?
The property that, uh, is currently owned by the E D A, yes.
On this map meeting that you have, um, with the Planning Commission and E D A, I guess I just didn't ever see it. Did an email go out to us that this meeting was happening or is that, was it closed or?
No, it was a public meeting and I did send an email out. I can check and I'm sure that council was included in that. I can double-check. We also sent mailers out to all of the landowners, including Chase Street Hops was on that list. So we should have, um, come to you also in the mail.
Is it for the owners on three oh one?
Landowners on the three oh one quarter, yes.
Yeah, I didn't get it, I'm not sure I didn't get an email, but that, that's what I was just.
We've, we've sent at least three mailers in the mail, uh, because the, the meeting has been scheduled and had to be rescheduled due to the pandemic about three separate times. So we've done about three different mailers.
I remember seeing the old ones. I didn't, I didn't see, I don't see, I don't see one of the stamps.
I think I will check my records, um, by.
And I was just wondering if it was open to the council and public, that's my question.
Of course.
And did you have any luck, you, you research in the, um, state and federal funding due to the COVID? And did you have any luck with anything on that?
Yes, so right now we are actively looking into the C B, C B B G grant, um, for COVID relief for small businesses. Right now, I am in the process of gauging businesses to determine if they did or did not take advantage of the CARES Act, which would disqualify them from the, uh, C B B G grant. So that's where we are with that right now. And luckily, because of the voucher program research that I've done, I've got a good handle and a good list of, of the businesses in town. So we're actively having conversations, finding out, a lot of folks have taken advantage of that CARES Act for paycheck, paycheck protection and, um, and some other things. But yes, that is ongoing and part of my report.
Is that just for the businesses on Main Street?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, it's, it's for any business.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Just want to let you know the E D A is trying to market, uh, the entire opportunity zone as well as downtown. And they've reached out to some, uh, businesses and developers, um, in the past and, and recently. So it's part of the overall view to get the opportunity zone something that we thought we'd, uh, do a pretty good job here. We haven't had a lot of interest because of the sound issues and the things that are going on. But, uh, E D A has been very active reaching out to developers, not only hotel developers, but on developers too. So let's just make sure that information that goes out is correct and, uh, not stealing.
So you had a meeting on January and you had a meeting in February. Was there any between February and June for E D A? Just curious.
No, due to the pandemic.
No Zoom or anything like that?
No, we have not, we cannot have a Zoom meeting during that time.
Okay, thank you.
Gerald, so when, uh, is May very good?
I believe it's, I want to say August twenty ninth off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Gerald, so I just want to say, I know there was a lot of pushback because August Festival was canceled. And, um, some crude things were said on Facebook pages. Very sad, um, to see some of our townspeople, the community, make comments to that effect. So I apologize to you for that. I for one know these events take a lot of time, a lot of energy. Um, it's not something that's put together in three months, in one month. You hit the ground running the day after the event is over. So thank you for everything you do and, um, appreciate it and apologize again for crude remarks on Facebook. Totally unnecessary.
And just for the note too, some of those were even out of the town and even out of the county and, uh, it was very uncalled for.
I appreciate that, uh, Councilman Goldman. I, for whatever it's worth, um, I knew that this may be unpopular, um, you know, but I, I, as at the state of the press release, I know that the decision was made with everyone's safety in mind. And, um, I think it was the right decision and I did, I did expect some, um, some negative feedback about it. Uh, but for what it, what it is worth, a, a big majority of people are really supportive of the decision that council has made.
More positive, yes.
Is there any other, are there any other questions? Thank you all very much for your time.
Thanks, thank you, Gerald.
Next item on the agenda is the Town Clerk Treasurer's Monthly Report. Are there any questions in the report? Here and done, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Monthly Report.
I have what I need to add.
Did you have something?
I have a quick question. Um, what, what are all the charges for Etsy? There's a two hundred and one, what is it?
Are you looking at the bills?
Yeah.
Uh, the Etsy charge is actually for the, um, partition, the screening we have there, that front reception desk?
Oh, gotcha, okay. And what is two thousand dollars to Golden Horn Court?
That was for the, um, Golden Green Virginia Community Website and maintenance of that.
That came out there.
It was great.
Town Manager, please, any questions, any comments or comments?
I, what I need to add, it's on our smart scale project, which is the fixing of the intersection and the J's that did the, and, uh, sidewalks down by, uh, Chase Street there, the parking lot and bike paths. They've given us the go-ahead to get a full application. They need some more engineering information and cost estimates. And we're working with B I D, uh, they have a big experience to, first, and B I D that buys that information. And August third, um, is when the final, um, deadline is, just get information in and then some time to start the work.
Thank you.
I did have a couple of questions that I want to make on the, uh, the Town Manager. What's A B D or Q bring?
That's I Works. That is, uh, and we talked about this earlier, is, uh, it is a system that, uh, we are going to be using to bring together all our records that, uh, we've advantage with activities going on throughout the, uh, whole government enterprise, including business licenses, um, zoning applications. We'll be able to do all our reporters, which you saw in the report, and it's, uh, we'll also be using it to, uh, map the water system and also all the, uh, best management practices and activities, get all the activities on maintenance as well as the same with the sewer system. This, uh, program, one of the advantages we'll have is that you'll, you don't know exactly what's happened on property. Uh, we don't know, uh, if somebody wants to know if a site permit had been approved for a property or a fence had been approved, the, the current record system is not by property. It's a physical file system that is by date that the activity took. So if you've got a permit back from nineteen ninety-five, uh, that is sort of a record. The only way we'll know that happened then is if they go through every file. So the system will, will, uh, be able to, will be able to load all that information in there and, uh, will also be able to keep track of everything that's happened on that piece of property. If we've had water damage, that record will be kept on that piece of property. If we've had to make a repair on that, uh, piece of property, that, that record will be there. Also, the public will be able to apply for their business license as well as zoning permits. Be able to pay for it online. And the other very nice thing is if somebody wants to go in, um, on going and see what, what has happened on a particular piece of property, developer, citizen, see if the permit's been passed, once we do all the data, load it into, we'll be able to go online and do that search. It's one of the things that we're trying to do is finalize the records here, to make it electronic. The other advantage is, uh, it, uh, it is web-based so that, like, many managers of us can enter both items or information, information goes right out to the field, uh, to people, you know, and goes out to them, so.
Sounds like a very delightful system. So what's the initial cost of the maintenance report?
Uh, the initial cost, um, is, is, I don't know, fifty hundred, two, two thousand?
I believe, I believe the initial cost was three thousand and that included all of the.
Uh, faulty, faulty activities.
So what's the, what's the first of all?
It's, we, we have, we have web support with computer services, but we, we're currently using three one one on the water sewer, public work site. Uh, they're component through Public Works and Water and Sewers, five thousand dollars a year. So it's an increase of fifteen hundred dollars to pick up all the water sewer, get a G I S mapping system. Again, the field work right now, when we go out and there's a water break, like, uh, two, a year ago, we had crews out there with all the flagmen and they spent hours finding the valve. And when they find it, they find the valve, it was broken off because it had never been exercised. And so we paid several hours to have crews out there, flagmen, and then ultimately we had it closed off, uh, entire neighborhood to fix, to leave down by for the hydrant. So on that, that side, there's a fifteen, fifteen hundred dollar increase in, on the, the record management for, uh, licenses and zoning, uh, that was a five thousand dollar, uh, final, but we have that in the budget. This is, you can add some.
I just wanted, I think we discussed this earlier, um, eight thousand a year for the total cost is, that's three thousand more than, uh, three one one was. And so that includes all the licensing and, um.
Okay, so eight thousand. Okay, good. So next question I have for you, uh, this Town Manager is, uh, the network cover insurance on sewer lateral issues. Um, and I'm not sure it's a front of the bureau from this time, but, you know, you have to discuss about Rainies, uh, issue there, establishment, discussion with them.
That, that in a slump, that one's going to free Main Street, had to be repaired. There was a slight, uh, slight belly harming in that line. And, uh, it, uh, this last week they had to, uh, start a crew out there and let me introduce it. And, uh, they replaced that, that line, that, their cost.
So all my comments before we're going to discuss that, um, Kilk issue, right, on the special plans, um, so we're going to discuss that, correct?
Rainies coming up, we're going to discuss Rainies, which, uh, that put one more agenda through.
And then with dying of Kilk, correct?
Regarding Rainies.
Yes, regarding Rainies, okay. And then what are your qualifications now?
Next item is the consent vendor, bills for June of twenty twenty, our motion to approve the bills.
Make a motion that we first the bills.
Another motion, okay, is that a second? Side of the notice, anybody in the discussion, all favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Move it to the unfinished business. In the ten in your packet is a donation for utility bill assistance, a resolution to accept the twenty four hundred dollars for the purpose of utility bill assistance and a policy for distributing the funds. You'll see a resolution, twenty twenty, that's the one in your packet. Okay, the policy. Do we have a motion by Mr. McCarver?
I just have a quick question.
Uh, we need to do a second and then we'll have a discussion. We have a second by Jean, motion of void. Can that part of the discussion, Jean?
With this, um, donation, and maybe Melissa, you can answer this. Will any of that go towards the person at the water league that was unable to pay that big bill? Or has that already been covered?
I think if, Ms. James, if this is approved tonight, I think the way that it would work is that the town would accept requests from people to be considered for.
Okay, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Then for how, what's the program to accept people, people from the outside? I'm sorry, this is one of them.
What's the program to, to recognize the people in the twenty two?
Um, that would be for council to prescribe.
But we have to put something else into this. Now, if this year just locks it in, the lady says you got the right to do that. Is that right or what? If it's building, it's not a policy, except for it.
Well, there's a utility assistance fund, um, that just says that, you know, it can either be a grant or an interest treaty loan and that people can apply. I think that additional criteria would be good, but that would be prescribed by council.
I mean, that's what I'm thinking, I don't see where it poses any sense of, you know, boot can get, how can it get, uh, why can it get, you know, uh, that, you know, that sort of criteria. It just says, this is a slide that opened right now, but we need to do what we want. Uh, and we don't need to be that great a stand-up far, but let's just get ourselves, like, if we don't, you, you know, we don't need to get that perception, always. Uh, so I think we'll have something, you know, that should be written up before we, uh, need to adopt or accept the money or not the policy and then talk on that later, you know, put it in a better definition.
All it's, uh, resolution, move to a local vote and the motion is to approve both. The resolution and the policy and I'll give a few minutes to wait for King. Are you going to do the local?
We can, yeah.
More? No? No?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jean, over?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm going to wait for the county vote.
I would add that, um, this policy can still be amended by council. I would add that this policy can still be amended by council. It's not like...
Not to put you on the spot, Tammy, but we have a resolution, a motion to approve the resolution and the policy for this. At this time, we have one no vote and the rest yesterday.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is our stimulus vouchers program. As a follow-up to the program outlined, presented to Council on a June fourth meeting, staff met with Councilman Paul and Ms. Keerman to discuss the details of this new program. Would you also want to speak on this or anybody, Glenn or Valerie?
Um, yeah, I did actually talk to Glenn earlier today. When we started this, it was a thought to help not just people in town, but to get the local businesses to help them along as a, as a stimulus, to kind of thank you for hanging in there, see what we can do. But my concern is, I'm second guessing, I guess, myself, there's so many concerns and challenges with the budget. And I was just wondering, should we proceed forward with this? We need further discussion. Because there are so many questions on the budget. There's so many people are concerned, I don't want them to think that we're just going to go along and do this. People need to know we're hearing what they are saying. So as much as I think it's good, it could be postponed till next year or I just have some concerns because I've heard from some of the people, I don't want them to think we're just giving things up real quick. But I think further discussion or comments are, you know, needed, yes, I think.
Mr. Mayor, from our perspective, I'm not further examination of the budget. I don't have a lot of faith in the numbers that are in question. And so I don't feel like that we can really count on where that is. So this program ran twenty thousand dollars. So I'm not having the faith in approaching numbers that can happen.
I object, I object.
You can object what you want, it's okay.
Why don't you have faith in the budget numbers?
Let's, hold on, let Glenn finish his comment. We're not going to interrupt anybody, we're going to keep order and...
Yeah, so anyway, that's my position. I just have faith in the, I'll think, we're on board where we are, everybody's doing everything. So, you know, I would like to put this on hold and bring it back later if we need to, but that's my opinion.
Okay. Another statement?
I'd like to comment, you stripped the record, I think it was very unprofessional. There's a comment, you should think you had an enclosed session, if you had a common on budget, you should have come to me and discussed it then.
Okay.
I can't agree with him. I think, I think we should talk, talk much about your idea as well. So I think it's, no way to object, you know, it kind of makes it. I think it's something that might be great, but in this time right now, I think, I think we may not be allowed to, to, what you thought.
Okay. What's your, I mean, would the consensus of council, would they be...
Yeah, you can, you don't have to take a vote if you just purely want to next one to run though.
But we want to...
You don't want it.
What do we just want?
Ask for a motion.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we just forget about until somebody can run back next year.
Okay. We have a motion to postpone the stimulus vouchers until twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
Well, you sent extra D to line, do you buy that?
Twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
Okay. I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion passes, we will cable the stimulus vouchers. The next item is the moriavity request for reimbursement. Do I need to read the background somewhere or does everybody familiar with this?
And if I can just add, as the property owners suggested a couple of tweaks that they wanted in the agreement, Melissa has handed that out to you. This just basically details what the reimbursement is for and clarifies that the fact that they were not connected is not for any cause of their own. They've indicated that they are okay with, with helping with this.
That's correct. Yeah, Lisa are here, we live at one thirty-four, thanks for having us again. The brand, last questions, comments, we're here. Thank you, Randy. So is there a motion for a decision on the request?
I'll make that motion soon.
That we approve with the release?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? We have a second, now we have discussion.
I have no money in any budget this fiscal year. I do have twenty thousand dollars in contingency in July one budget, but as tonight, I came to you and told you that we need this to ten thousand dollars to give to your general fund, we definitely have a lot of fund to do there, and we need to get that, plus I know we have quite a little, Melissa, the water and sewer budgets, there's a little hiccup, but we've had hiccups since then.
Would you like to amend your motion to pay a dollar to the one budget?
I don't think you could do that until July one.
Okay, that's a lot, we'll be able to help next month. We got no there.
I do have a question for you in regard to that, sort of down there, but, you know, have you had anything special to Kilk, Kilk about this? And so what liability is this Kilk having regards to this?
The payment, we tied it in. Project is closed out, this far as any liability that might have been there.
There's no warranty on their work?
I can check to see if this is under the warranty. There's also the, the clients weren't perfect and we can look at it.
Just because the engineer's plans weren't perfect, you know, when the guys in the field, they have to make the appropriate adjustments in the field, nothing's absolutely perfect, especially with the stuff we add. But we have a homeowner that's, that's put themselves out a significant amount, quite frankly, this is pretty cheap, I'd like to tell you, it would be a plummeted, ten grand or more, you guys know that, you cover up stuff all the time. But, you know, Kilk is the one that created this problem. You know, they should cover this under whatever warranty, can we get a twenty day warranty or a year warranty, what do we get?
I would probably go to twenty-nine.
I don't have any, I'd be happy to look into that and report back to you by email because I don't want it to...
That's not, I mean, it's been made in the office, we don't get a warranty for something and issue that it was obvious that, you know, they created the problem.
Well, I don't know if it was obvious. I mean, was it obvious to you, Randy, that pipe wasn't yours when we saw it?
That's true, that's correct, but working as a blue collar worker and in the trades, all the plumbers I've ever talked to said, it's almost near impossible to miss a lateral when they're putting in a sewer line, it was grossly a big mistake, I think.
And so peace of mind for the citizens, you know, I hate to put them off another month without some type of decision, but at the same times, we do need to have a follow-up with Kevin, COVID. I can't necessarily ask for a consensus on this of the council's pleasure, but I apologize that we have to wait another month because I thought it would be difficult.
I mean, that's okay with us, but just long we know it's going to be approved. We're, we're going to...
I can't guarantee approval on it.
I would suggest that council...
We're looking for a guarantee on that.
Have a very brief meeting, maybe next Thursday, which is regular, not just in terms of...
We can have a meeting, we weren't scheduled, but we...
You can continue the shooting, okay? Like you're determined, right?
But it's their regular meeting anyway.
No, we moved.
Right, we continued the last one.
We don't have one.
Instead of republishing.
Correct, right.
And we posted this cancel, no, we posted it.
No, we actually, we continued the June fourth meeting to the twenty-fifth. We did, I remember closing out the meeting with the motion.
Yeah, so maybe if you haven't published it, the other ones canceled, the intent was to make this a live meeting.
Okay, we don't have...
We don't want to allow a live meeting.
Does council want a meeting on the second with the purpose of discussing this item? I've heard the two council members.
It's on the same, on the road or...
Let me just add a quick question. I know when I was here last month, we negotiated our claim and it seemed like on a verbal that everything was good and nothing was brought up, you guys were out of money thirty days ago and I came back under the impression that the lease liability was good for me and Lisa. It was pretty much a good vote. And now what I'm hearing is after ninety days of this happening is we don't have the money. I mean, there should be some type of contingency money in there for issues like this.
They won't have money next week and what we're discussing is getting together to scrutiny next week to go and authorize the payment to be able to fight the challenge.
I was misunderstood, sorry about that.
Council does not want to be in the first place. Council, four council members at least, you have a meeting in the first place.
Can you meet any other time, next week? Yeah.
Is it possible that we could just like come in and check, maybe do something? I mean, like, who, how?
I was saying if we're going to do a set meeting on the second, it would basically come in, this would be the one agenda item and then it would be done. Nothing else would be added to the agenda.
And then all you need is just forum, I mean, everybody doesn't have to, you just need enough to vote on it and prove it.
That's a good question, really trying, it's a large job, they all asked it. Since this is under the one percent in this, in this year's budget, we live at about eight out of unsigned numbers, it's worth other money for, for that.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, then do it tonight.
Okay.
Okay, and...
Do we need to do it after the budget?
So this is so...
No, that's for, the budget ended to this...
To the twenty, nineteen and twenty budget?
Right, and then I'm assuming that you want to put some sort of contingency, check the warranty or, if it's made or...
No.
No, just make a claim and then go back.
We'll, we'll back that up.
Yeah, the town, the town needs to like that, that will happen.
Okay.
Okay, so my motion stands, Mr. Mayor.
So the motion is to approve the lease agreement, to pay the sum to the property owners and to transfer that same amount of money out of the contingency reserve fund into this year's budget to pay the, to cover the costs.
Okay. We have a motion, like the win, is there a second? Second by Oates, any further discussion, I think we talked quite a bit about it. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, we love, appreciate it. Oh, just Kevin Whitman, like, how do you expect, he came under the house and he did agree that it was a one, one place system, an indoor system.
They got him.
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request to pay for repairs. The background on this, on February twenty-fifth, Mr. Moore experienced a leak on his property between the water meter and the water main, between the main and the meter, not on the property owner's side of the meter. Berks-Holland was called to repair the leak and told by, told the village town, Mr. Moore maintains that the repairs are the town's responsibility because the leak was on the town's side of the meter. Town code, section five, there's one six four, states that if there's a leak in a waterline on the property of a customer of the water, it shall be the responsibility of the owner or owner of such property to locate and repair such leak. Berks-Holland has not yet been paid for those inquiries. I'd like to add to note that in years past, the town has covered this fault for that waterline because, as Mr. Moore would say, he has no reason to repair it. So I talked to Mr. Moore about this and I said, would you be agreeable, and I've spoken with the town manager and the town clerk, it's still council's determination, but I believe we need to pay this bill based off of our previous precedents that we set as a town. At the time that we pay this bill, we need to meet with Mr. Moore, which is the property owner, and explain to him the town code that we have not been following in the past, so that way as moving forward, he can be on top of exactly this fault. It's a bill of eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and David Berks has been waiting for payment for a while. He was gracious enough to wait for the councilmen for this, but I think because of the lack of clarification that we weren't enforcing the town code on this section in the past, we want to get to that point. I think it's fair to the property owner that we paid us this time with them, with the full understanding that moving forward, that responsibility is you, even though we may want to look at that town code section, because I'm still not sure how we enforce that. If there's a prop, if there's a leak before the meter, yeah, I mean, we're wasting water coming out of our well and...
So my question would be, is that you've got a meter here, you've got a current meter, they're talking about this, this and here. Who owns that property? Isn't that a meat out right away?
Not, not on that bill. I don't...
Yeah, what, what has happened, oh yeah, this, this is way off the road, this is, two things have happened in the past.
You're naked, all with, that image is built, every day, about this way it's built.
This is not, this is not a unique issue and it's swimmer correcting. Even though the construction standards require it to be placed there and our ordinance requires it to be placed there, the past practice seems to be from the number of issues in the town is that in the past, they just let the, the meter wherever the contractor or then wanted to put it. And so, and that creates a whole host of issues because it's not our property and we've got, got to use them and all that. It's under the meter replacement project, all those meters will be moved to the proper place of the utility piece, where those current meters are right now, but it's going to cut out the fluid, you can just whatever that pipe is, put that pipe in, put the new meter where it's supposed to be and inform them, here's the ordinance, that's on your property, something happens going forward, so a year from now, this will not be an issue.
So we're, we're paying a sense of remorse?
Absolutely.
Correct. But I forgot the part about the water meter being moved once we do this replacement with the grant one.
So was this not announced before or this...
Years ago, I was told it had happened before. So is there a motion to approve the payment in the name of, with the explanation that this will be remedied going forward?
Yes, I make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion by Tammy, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Glenn, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say something, that section five, one sixty-four, I mean, it's, it's very vague, it doesn't say anything about meters or anything else. I mean, the meter is on his property and the meter belongs to the town. It's just like electricity. You put a meter on your house and the clock comes out, they drop the line on, that's their responsibility, and that meter back, it's true to be saying, but this does not state that in that format. It just says if there's a water leak, that the property owner will be responsible for the amount of water that's lost, assuming that...
In the repairs.
Assuming, assuming that he came across the meter, well, they come across the meters, for one thing, you know, water loss, to the property owner. Assuming, assuming that he came across the meter, when he come across the meters, for one thing, he was going to water loss, it's the property owner.
No, if he saw it, we can visibly do it, but I'm just saying, and he doesn't own the meter either. It's just like you say, it's been the norm.
But to go from here on out that way would be wrong until we replace them. Once we replace them, we put them in a lot of ways and stuff, easements and everything. Then I can agree with that. But just trying to say, well, we're going to do this if the national comes up. And just say that last meeting that we weren't going to, you know, practice adding more and more, be straightforward. I just don't see where it reads and nothing to it like that.
It needs to be modified.
It needs, it needs to be written more, more, more material. It doesn't say anything about meters.
So this is a revenue loss, not for this repair, but a revenue loss for the town. That we're losing water and we're not metering your water.
Yeah.
Right?
It would have been, yes. He, he had really no responsibility except for what this code reads to report the leak. He never reported the leak yet.
I don't have a last goal in this.
Yeah, I, I, I heard, this, so I understand what Mark's saying or as you're saying, the issue. But like I said, we're going to have both our standards always said it had to be out there. And then it became clear that anything was on the other side of the meter was their responsibility. And the people in the field didn't read the code, they just felt that anything on our side of the meter was our responsibility for the same reasons you're talking about, that you're, you're losing revenue. We're going to make our construction standards match up with putting it there at the property line and the utility easement. And I understand what Mr. Gaines is saying. Is this, this saying that until we get that done within the next twelve to eighteen months, that if this comes up, that we still fix it? Is that what you're saying?
Counsel's point, we need to change the, we need to modify this code.
Well, ultimately, we want the code to say what it's saying. I mean, we can be more specific, but I mean, it's right at the property line. As we're putting it right there is that, that, that once it's on the property, it's, it's your issue.
Right, but it doesn't say at the meter, they just get more, more, they, they won't be so great.
Because if you, if, if you remember back when you pulled Mastel up and we got the grant for the water running down there at the trailer park in New York. One of the biggest sections was where to put the meters at to lessen the town's liability, we're being responsible for the lines going to the meters.
Remember trying to fix it.
Well, they, but they put the meters way up on the newer properties in the property, about probably fifty feet. So the restrictions on the line there that, and a meter too, that should be sealed the town is responsible, but because of the way it was set up and the way it was discussed in the meeting. So I'm just saying, you can't, you know, there, you know, y'all agree, okay, let's put it up wherever we need to and we're using the responsibility, but that's nobody. There's a different circumstance right there. Because we talked about then about who's responsible for the lines and meters. And then pretty closely.
Well, let's, let's settle this discussion and we can still relate to the code. We can revise the code and look at it to see if we need to better word it.
Well, we are currently going to be taking up the code here in the next month or so.
Yes.
Hi, oh, the well, no, I'm into it. I'm into it. I just need a note to go back to that section.
Okay, so it'll be reversed when we're moving back to the attorney.
We have a motion and a second. We.
Can I please get the motion retired instead?
A motion to approve the invoice. Payment of invoice. Invoice number two-two-seven-four-nine. And we have a second. By Otis. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Next item is a request from Mr. Hilton to waive the sewer connection fee on one forty-eight Maury Avenue. This, request from Mr. Hilton to the town to consider waiving the sewer connection fees of six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the existing house on one forty-eight Maury Avenue. Similar requests have been made and denied by council in the past, most recently seventeen-five-one eighty to the old board. Just another brief history on this. We did offer the citizens in town a one-time with free from that payment back in two thousand thirteen. We only had a couple citizens take advantage of that and like the description says. Most recently, the property at seventeen-five-one eighty to the old board made this same request and lost the money. So with this council's authority.
Mr. Mayor, why was this re-creased pay? Just said in the seventh town park?
We were trying to, it was when the Chesapeake Bay Act started doing the monitoring and we were trying to get rid of as many subject fields at the town. So it was just an incentive to try to get people to connect because we needed some more users from the system.
And it's true, he was off with this opportunity and was lying, is that correct?
Yes, there's, he, he wrote a, he included the letter that was sent to him in here showing.
I want to make sure I write that right, okay.
And it's, it, what's, doctor's pleasure.
I make a motion, we deny it.
Okay, we have a motion to deny it.
I'll say it.
There's a second by Deborah. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes to deny. Next item is the adoption of the F Y twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal plan. Proposed budget and rates for the twenty twenty, F Y twenty twenty-one were developed and reserved with the budget committee and reviewed by the entire council at May seventeenth. The budget was duly advertised in the council room. A public hearing on the proposed fiscal plan on June fourth, twenty twenty. A resolution is attached. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero four?
We have a motion to adopt it.
We have a motion to adopt it. Is there a second?
A second.
You have a second. But Tammy, is there any further discussion?
Yes, I have one. We, oh, the council. I like to, ten thousand dollars that we had in here for the red moment development. I like to see that, that have they not given to them until they present a plan to us as far as what we're going to do. The reason I'm saying that is that I didn't have first to be used on local.
Hold that, hold that thought. Is that the end of the appropriations vote? Or is that the end of the vote?
It could be both.
Okay.
Whereas. Well, we have to tell you I have to run now. I just feel that, you know, the hotel has been going on too long, too much time to spend on it, turning it up. Things go too bad with the businesses in this town.
Okay. And so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, I can't.
Remove ten thousand miles of the E D A concept.
Not removed, no. The motion is for the resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero four. The, with the contingency on the ten thousand miles to the E D A that they presented plan on how they plan to use that money. Hopefully they can receive it.
Is that be able to do that in the agency? I, I don't think that's, that's fine. If you want to do that, no issue. But, you know, as council members take advantage of the monies that are in there, that may not be an appropriate thing either. So let's make sure that, that, that's appropriate.
We're, we're not going to get into it back and forth here. I'm not going to allow it to happen.
Very.
I love you. I love you.
Just quiet, quiet, quiet. Just quiet. Just let it be. Seriously, I'm not, we're not doing this tonight. We're here to approve a budget. We're going to approve the budget or we're going to adjust the budget. That's what we're going to do. Is there any further discussion on the resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero four?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, in regards to the amount of increase in clerk treasures, uh, sign of money in here. That's a significant amount of money increased here. Do we have a breakdown how that's going to be spent?
We ended up, was that a work session? I mean, those provided and we're going down?
There it was.
Yes, it was with the, the line item budget. Each line item explained which, which increases what. I believe we actually covered some of that at the last meeting.
So I have a forty-five thousand dollar increase on that. That looks like about a twenty percent increase and we're concerned about.
Well, what, what are the things? Do I, maybe you want to be touch specific to get the line item?
Sure, no problem. Thanks. So we're looking at the fact budget and we're looking at things that are going on and twenty percent increase in that budget, uh, allowing has seemed pretty significant.
Okay, let's give the town manager a chance. We're quick to respond to that because there could be reason, the county purposes moving.
Well, I'm sure there are, yeah.
So let's give him a chance to respond.
There was a twenty thousand dollar increase by Melissa returning full time with the change in health insurance and of course with that the corresponding, uh, social security, uh, V R S. And then with us going to the county health plan, there was a nine thousand dollar increase. Like four hundred dollar increase in health insurance costs in that line item.
I'm sorry, what was the nine thousand dollar increase for?
Uh, actually, that was an increase in V R S. The, the health insurance was sixty-five five and then another big one is was the audit, uh, cost were increased by seven thousand dollars because in the past, we, we weren't getting this in depth.
Right, that's not in the clerk treasurer's salary line, I don't think. Correct. So I guess my question.
Well, this is a clerk treasurer's right here. The treasurer's the budget, that entire budget for that office.
So that nine thousand dollars is in that budget and then by item budget forty-five?
All, all, all those numbers that I gave you are included in the forty-five thousand.
Okay, that's fine. Just a question, just asking.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Otis? Go ahead.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now the next item, just spin the book.
Did you want it? Mr. Gaines, is it your intent to include that same contingency in appropriations?
Doesn't care either way. It doesn't matter.
If it's not in the appropriations, it's possible that the money could be spent.
Then yes. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution R twenty twenty dash zero zero four, which is the appropriation of adopted this for year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one operating budget?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
As stated or with the E D A?
As, as stated with the E D A, uh, research should add into it.
And so just for clarity, the motion is to approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero four but to withhold the spending or, or the transfer of the ten thousand dollars to the E D A until?
The, the scope, you know, plan, you know, how they're going to use, what they're going to use for, yes.
And so who approves that scope when it's presumed? Is that the town manager?
Council. Was that, I would say it would be council would approve that. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second now.
All right, a second by Tammy. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
No.
No. Moving along here. Next item is a USDA grant application opportunity for a public works vehicle. The public works and utilities department is in need of a new vehicle. Recently, one of the trucks failed inspection and is unsafe to drive. The USDA grant will fund twenty-five thousand for the purchase price of the new vehicle. The town's portion will be split between public works, water and sewer. Is there a resolution to author, uh, adopt the resolution and authorize the town manager to sign the application and submit to the USDA?
I would like to see if we can have longer on this, maybe come up with a different vehicle and see what, because we don't know how much a newer vehicle can cost. And right now, we're talking about money, uh, you know, thirty thousand dollars to be paid, uh, moved. And the other twenty-seven thousand dollar voucher that we just scratched. I understand we're down a vehicle, but it could cost us another twenty-five thousand on top of this twenty-five thousand, just a good one. Uh, talk with Billy and Reese, um, they come up with the, with the, with the plan and maybe see if we can acquire a S ten. If it'd be a smaller vehicle, the those used and then the F one fifty, whatever it is, we go back into the use by the workers. Uh, and see how much rent that, well, that would be and how much less it would be that we would have to land on to for that.
Yeah, so this, this authorized decision of the grant, when we came back with a specific deal call and cost, you would prove it at that time. And discussing things with both Billy and Mark, I suggested, you know, Billy's on call, so he's using that vehicle, lock and go back and forth. And they use a lot of gas and he does a lot of running around town, things where he doesn't need to put in the car and going with that. So we've talked about either a smaller pickup or, or, or some other utility vehicle that's cheaper to operate and cheaper than the cost than a full-size truck with utilities.
So would you like to, but it's pending this till next month? Contended, you come back with the price on the vehicle, so we gotta look at difference could be, or what do you want to do?
Well, I like to go ahead with the application that you didn't like for the money. You don't have to accept, you know, that once it's done. You know, that's the next step, deciding on what the full profit's going to be.
Okay.
And this, this would get us at least knowing that we're lining it up to a twenty-five thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
You have to get a new vehicle if you get this twenty-five thousand?
I, I believe the USDA is not for new vehicles yet. Princess is not for new.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution that authorize the town manager to at least apply for the?
Yes, I make that motion?
A motion by Tammy. Is there a second? Second by Deborah. Any further discussion?
I think we can need a contingency to make sure if there's come back in the council to see if the call is somebody different, so I'm actually good. Yeah.
We still have to, yeah, appropriate funds first.
We still have to accept the grant or the grant conditions on the final bid. This is just the application.
I understand, but it could cost us an additional point down down off and from the E D A.
At that time, you could say no. It's just from the, you tell staff.
It has to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be coming back to the council and, and gladly work with the budget committee or in the council on that.
Any questions?
Okay. All in roll call vote is our resolution. Mark?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Otis? Motion passes. Item eighteen, proposed text amendment to B one special use. A zoning permit application has been submitted proposing a text amendment that would expand the current B one zoning special uses to add wording to allow for businesses similar to that of an auto repair shop, which is currently allowed on the special use permit. The planning commission scheduled a public hearing for July twenty and then will return this recommendation capital. Uh, requested action is authorize the town manager to advertise and schedule a public hearing for proposed text amendment.
I have a question for this panel. Could this be put with the proposed amendments that we're reviewing or does it need to go out of that?
It needs to go ahead of that. This is, uh... It needs to go ahead of that, this is, uh...
Okay, I was just asking.
So do we need a motion to authorize the town manager to advertise? Is there a motion to authorize the town manager to advertise, uh, schedule a public hearing at their August sixth meeting?
I make that motion.
Your motion by Tammy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Valerie, any further discussion?
So what exactly are we counting on this? I mean, I, I read right here in the back, but I guess I fully read them, uh, maybe my, maybe why you can't tell me, so I won't.
Uh, I would refer to the applicant on the text amendment.
So the amendment that I'm proposing would expand on the possible special visits that would be similarly in use to the auto repair that's already allowed. Currently, um, we have several businesses on someone, AP, on AP LBR, um, that would could possibly benefit from this. The uses proposed would all be by special use, so council could put conditions on it, someone would have to come back and apply with specific conditions. This would only be to allow that text into the code, someone would still have to come in and apply. So if, the reason that I'm applying for is because I have a business, um, property for sale. I have a potential buyer who would like to do a use that is similar to auto repair, but not auto repair, so if we just move in and do it. This allows council to put some conditions on it. If someone were to go to that property and do an auto repair, since it's already auto repair, council could not put conditions on it, and it could turn into potentially something like other auto repair jobs become the area. So this actually... It binds it, it gives property owners more potential uses if they're leasing a property or if they own a property. And in this case, a property is an opportunity zone and potential buyer is looking to make advantage of that, it was a council.
Thank you. I mean, it opens up the possibility of more uses, but keeping it within the vision and, you know, more economic development here in town.
I'd like to know if you give a lot of time to manage a piece of property outside.
Okay, we have the motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mark, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Is there a motion to go, uh, well, let's do a, let's do a committee report before we go to closed session. Mark? Can we vote it's passed? Valerie?
Um, yeah, we met with the planning commission and the EDA as one of the leaders on the second. Um, very, very positive. The landowners that attended, only two, but it was Mike Vance and Bernie Mahan, um, who gave us some really great feedback on, and, um, it seems really positive as to the P2 use map and really made the difference. So I think between the planning commission and the EDA, we're on the same path, um, especially with date as well to the table. And I just thank Joelsa and Jim and Roy for putting it all together, um, for the details.
Thank you. Tammy?
Uh, we didn't have a meeting for utilities and sidewalks committee, but, um, as you can see, some sidewalks have been completed along, uh, Main Street. Still a question about Maury, I was told that it was not going to happen now, so I'm going to follow up that again. I have emails from BDOT saying, ready, we're starting spring, it's going out of the night.
Can you get a list of that because I was told there was still potential some money in the budget that wasn't spent, but that's just one of the workers on, on the street.
Yeah, I was told today, but now, I'll follow up again.
Deborah?
I think that's, we had a bad session.
As Valerie said, um, we did meet with the planning commission and I echoed the same that it was a good meeting and also something is being discussed besides the town.
I have nothing. Is there a motion to go into closed session, closed meeting pursuant to code of Virginia, section two dot two dash three seven one one A one for the purpose of discussing the performance contract of a police chief? We have a motion by Mark, is there a second? Second by Otis. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Right, we'll take a five-minute recess to activate the debate.
You should be able to turn your mic on.
Is there a motion to come out of closed session? Motion by Mr. Newman, all right, Deborah. Second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor, raise your right hand. Hey, do you certify that what we spoke about in the closed session came to the closed session? Yes.
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
And that certified. Okay, we're back in open session. Is there any further discussion for the good of the work? Is there, yes. Reese won't be there.
Just, just to be clear, we're going to put the July meeting is canceled.
Correct. And, and Reese, due to vacation being moved due to COVID, will not be at our August meeting, August sixth. So if we speak that we need Reese to move the meeting, but... Hey, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Okay, motion by Jean, section by Mark, all in favor, raise your right hand.